Good morning. It's 10 a.m. on December 5th, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one raise their hand or come forward, we'll close public comment number one. We have no agency reports this morning. Consideration of minutes from November 28, 2023.
I move approval of minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I would move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as listed.
Second.
Presented.
Moved and seconded. Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consent agenda.
I move approval of items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We have no public hearing items or additional items. Moving to departmental reports. We have a conservation quarterly report. Good morning, Mike.
Morning. We'll try to be that quick.
No pressure.
No. Well, I think it's been, I think it's been a little, a little bit of time since I've been here. And so I've got a lot of ground to cover, but I won't go over everything. You should have the report that I submitted. So it just kind of hit some highlights along those. This summer has been a busy summer with, Kelly, on all ends, from our educational programs to our park improvement projects and the such. Some of the highlights from that, you know, we've been undergoing improvement at McFarland Lake during the renovation project there. It's taken all summer. Thank goodness, this was a dry summer in that regard. Because I don't know that it would have been tenable to finish had it been otherwise. And so, but anyway, thank, thank goodness, we are at substantial completion now with the project. And now we're waiting on Mother Nature. So as soon as we get some precipitation, it'll go, it will stay in the lake until the lake's full. So that's wonderful, a few odds and ends that we have to finish up around it. But look forward to completing that. All in all, in the end, I think we ended up, we raised the level of the lake as per design. We raised the level of the lake a little under a foot. So more surface water area. And at the same time, we dredged, golly, about 15 feet at the most. So it was a significant amount of material that, that we had to remove. As any project, we found a few unknowns once we got into it and that we had to address. But all in all, everything went well. Everything went smooth. And, and we're going to end up under budget on it. So, so that's all good news. Nature Trail, the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, you know, we've been working on that. We've got two projects coming up for public bidding here soon. One's bidding through DOT. That's a phase three project, which will be paving from the Skunk River to S14. The pay, and then in addition to that, the phase four through, through phase six project bid as one. And that's the project that will go from S14 over to the city of Collins. And so we expect that, that the phase three project with, with DOT will be let here soon in December. And then the next phase four through six will be, I don't know, January, February, when we let that one. So hopefully we get some synergy between the two and, and bidding. With that, you can expect in your coming meetings, I'm not sure when we'll have this yet, but Supervisor Merkin and I attended a meeting with the city of Maxwell, mayor and council, and discussed the route through Maxwell and kind of how we, how we present that in light of a request from them to consider merging our project with a road improvement project that they wanted to do. Any rate, you'll see an MOU come forward, I'll say in the next month, maybe thereabouts in that regard. Dakin's Lake, not a lot to say there other than the solar array is, is up. You can see it when you, when you visit the park or drive by the park, but it's not operational yet. It looks operational, but it isn't. So that's coming. Expect that that will be operational at some point here in the next month or, or two. Sopers Mill, another project that we worked on for quite some time. And again, thank goodness that we had, ironically, that we had low water conditions that the contractor was able to finish that project up on the Skunk River at Sopers Mill. That went well. You know that next week we are opening bids here for the Hickory Grove wastewater project. As far as water quality, we've got some, we got some great news from HAWK that they are sponsoring our monitoring program. So that's fabulous. They produce the supplies that we use. They manufacture the, the test strips and the such. And they do all of the chemistries, I think, barring one or two, that we do as part of the, the protocol on the monitoring. They produce all of those, the, the test strips. So it's easy for us to have, have a good relationship with, with HAWK that's, that's in our community. So they're providing the supplies we need for that. So that's wonderful. They're very excited about it. We're moving forward with the design for the 24 construction of Edge of Field projects. And so that's in the queue as well. And always, you know, we're always looking for grant support, as you know. We have a lot of stream bank stabilization projects that we would like to do. And so we're trying to leverage some outside or find some outside funds to bring those forward. Thus far, we haven't hit gold, but we'll keep looking. You may remember that we completed the master planning efforts. We did two this year, one for Hickory Grove Park and one for the Conservation Center at McFarland. And so we have both of those completed. And I'm sure we'll talk about some of those when we get to CIP time and, and budget time. So we'll talk more about that. But did have a, we're really happy with the results of those projects, had a lot of public engagement, public participation. So that was wonderful to see. Prairie Valley Preserve, i.e. what we've always called Dotson in my mind. But Prairie Valley Preserve, which is on County Line Road west of Gilbert. We, as you know, have been working forward to a wetland there. I think the plans are done now. So now we're just waiting to sync that up with the drainage district improvements as those come forward. And I think Tyler Conley is nearly done with those plans. And so we'll work to sync those to get a, to get good, preferably good bids on both.
And as a reminder, to remind us, the DNR is putting some money into that.
Idols is.
Idols is.
Yeah.
And do you remember the amount of money?
I should know off the top of my head, shouldn't I? But I.
Yeah, and I can't remember.
They were, Idols is going to cover the cost for the district. They're going to cover the cost from 170th South. So there's a portion of the district project that's in there. And, and Idols is going to cover that. So we'll do those two projects, the repair project, will probably have a couple divisions in it. One that's, the, the county is responsible for, i.e. the road, et cetera, under the road, et cetera. One that Idols will pay. And then another one that's levied, right? So that'll be the district project. We will, the, what, the one that Idols will pay for will include a manhole that we will tie into on the wetland project. So, but we'll keep those two projects distinct in that manner. And bid separately, of course. We also just finished up a RFP process for revising the county trails plan. The county trails plan originally was done when we completed the C2C. And so it's included in, in the comp plan. And it needs to be revised. And so we've, we're budgeted for this year to do a plan update. So we've just solicited proposals and we're going to be entering a contract here soon to move forward with, with an update project. So that'll be nice to, nice to see as well. And I expect that that'll come forward here really soon. As you know, we've been working on land protection acquisition at the Deppi Farm, the Deppi property, which is adjacent to McFarland Park. We've been working on that for, for some time now. And I'm thrilled to say that we've reached our acquisition goal. So we received a federal grant, or we've been awarded a federal grant. And then we received multiple private donations. And of, I guess the latest one is, is an individual here in the county that wanted to take us across the finish line and did a significant, significant donation toward that project. So, so now I can say we're, we are whole on acquisition. Assuming we move forward with our pledges that were already made toward acquisition, which we will. And, and then we can start looking at some funding to put a parking lot in, put a picnic shelter in and, and the trails. So, so that'll be next on, on the Deppi project. I mentioned our EE programming that has just run very smoothly over the summer with our nature camps, et cetera. You'll see some, some FY23 statistics in here since we, I don't think I've been here since we closed out 23. And so you'll see some of those statistics, a little over 1,000 programs, almost 26,000 contacts. And again, in all of our school districts. Climate change, environmental health, we've had a little bit of effort. I shouldn't say a little bit, a lot of effort going into that. A couple of small things we've done in that regard is some messaging on, on some of our, in some of our programs that I reference. And then also, we did just get our, our first EV. And so we're happy to have that. And that's, that's getting used quite a bit, primarily to our school programs and the such. So that's getting used a lot. We're happy to have that. Kind of in that same vein, our diversity efforts, we have included some statements as a, as a SOP on, on our program registrations or program descriptions, if you will, on, on kind of what can be expected. I.e. what kind, if there's hiking, what kind of hiking, you know, where the program's going to be indoors, outdoors. Are there, are there accessibility methods available for the program, et cetera? So those are kind of the things that, that we're addressing in our, in our program statements. And also our Nature Connect program, we've kind of struggled with this one over the years. But we get a lot of, we've received a lot of very positive support for it. But this again is a kind of an underwriting of fees. And so if someone qualifies for, for MICA assistance, then they can qualify for reduced fees. Those reduced fees are offset by donations. And so we've got more donations right now than we have utilization of the program significantly. And so we're trying to work with MICA. I think they've had some staff turnover and see, you know, what we can do to, to help bolster the participation in the program. So it's a great program. Happy to, to offer it. It's, we wish it were being utilized better or more.
That makes you wonder what the, what all of the barriers are.
Yeah.
Is it transportation? Is that why?
Right, right. As far as our natural resources go, we, probably a couple of years ago, we instituted a new kind of a volunteer classification, if you will, our master resource stewards. And we give, we invest in these folks, give them a little more training. They actually get a pesticide applicator's license under ours. And, and we do all that training. And then they essentially go out and, and work at their own schedule, on their own, at, at different parks. And, golly, we've got over half a FTE so far and, and folks doing that. That's significant. And so we're just thrilled, thrilled with that, that we've got a number of people that are, that are doing that. So hopefully we'll even, you know, keep, continue to improve that and find better, find, always find better ways, more ways to engage with our volunteers and, and give them the means to feel productive in what they do for the county. So our natural resource program has also been pretty active in grants and soliciting grants. And you'll see three of them listed here, mostly forestry grants for tree replanting. One of them is a unique grant, Species of Greatest Conservation Need Grant through the DNR. We received this together with Polk County Conservation. And the, the impetus here is to look at habitat protection improvement for species of greatest conservation need. And we're looking specifically at Prairie Valley in this grant. And since, view this as a, a great opportunity to showcase habitat protection within a urban, quasi-urban area, even though this isn't considered an urban area there, develops with a subdivision and develop more as an urban type of development. And, and so we were thrilled to get that grant. And that grant will assist us in habitat restoration on the, on the site as well as some communication with the HOA. Once that gets set up and talking about this, the site and why we did what we did, et cetera, with the protections there. Other than that, you'll see some staff that we've welcomed into the, welcomed into the fold over the summer. Amber Pyatt as a new naturalist that started in May. And I tell you what, they are, some of you know, but our naturalists hit the ground running. Basically, right after the holidays, they go into full force in the school classroom programs. And then from that, there's very little reprieve before they go into full force with nature camps. And so there's not a lot of breathing time in there, let alone orientation time for folks that are just joining us. And so we had two, Amber Pyatt and Claire Fans that, that have joined us just this summer and have just hit the ground running, doing an exceptional job. As is, we had an administrative assistant join us this summer as well. Kind of later, latter part of the summer. And if you haven't had an opportunity to meet her, I'd encourage you to, if you're out and about, stop in and meet Jessica. She's just a wonderful human and we're, we're really pleased to have her. So having said that, as far as employment, we, it's hard to believe, but we're already doing recruitment for our summer positions for next year. And so it seems like we bump those up on the timetable every year in, in order to be successful with our recruitment. And so we're already looking for folks to, to come join us next summer. And look forward to be able, able to continue to find good applicants. This last summer, we had a lot of returnees and returnees are all fabulous. The more returnees we can get, the better for many reasons. And so hopeful, hopefully we do get some more returnees as well. I'm sure you are aware also, but the collective bargaining unit for conservation did not recertify. So our intention is to, I guess, move, keep the, keep the existing pay levels and have the pay, have the job description scored and put it placed into the, the pay scale. And so we're working with Alyssa to do that and expect that that will, any eventual changes coming out of that that would take effect July 1st. Last thing I'll say is, Kelly, you've, I know you're familiar with the REAP program, Resource Enhancement and Protection Program. And we just went through a, a effort to revise the county REAP plan. The county REAP plan is, it's, it's really required that every county have a plan. Few do. But it's an opportunity for, for folks from different partner agencies, folks from cities or different jurisdictions to get together and talk about what are the things that's important as a county in resource protection. And so we just refi, just revised the, the REAP plan for the county. And it's a, it's a nice plan. We've made some, some, some good revisions and some significant progress on, on, on what's in the plan. So nice to be able to complete that. This, the county plan is being reused really as a template. When the state REAP coordinator gets questions from other counties about example plans, Story County's plan is often the go-to that the state coordinator uses as, for other counties. So with that, I take any questions?
Just one. Did you get any more information from the engineers on the alternate route on Maxwell, part of the, the Heart of Iowa Trail? Are they going to get back to you soon?
We are meeting, we are meeting with the engineers as we speak. I've got a staff member down, we're meeting with engineers to look at the plan we discussed and to get that surveyed.
Okay, good.
So I, I alluded to this earlier, but the, the route that we are landing on will, will take it from, if you're familiar with Max, uh, Maxwell, I can briefly describe it. The southwest, southwest corner where the trail comes into town and crosses the creek. And then it meets Army Post Road that goes up to the fairground, not the fairgrounds, but the rodeo arena and the parks. So right at that intersection with Army Post Road, the trail will cross Army Post Road and stay along the south side of the old railroad alignment. You can see that on 210. You can see the old railroad alignment. And then the city owns that piece between the, the road, highway 210 and the railroad. And they've planted that into Prairie. So the trail will stay basically at the toe of that railroad, the old railroad bed, which is an elevated bed. So, and then cross 210 again as the highway turns just after the Dollar General.
Uh huh, yep.
So, and then we'll work with the city to come up with ways to integrate, if you will, the, the trail into the, the city. So the mayor and, and council members have been talking about other trail connections, sidewalk connections, et cetera, wayfinding to make it easier for trailgoers to find other things in town. Whether they want to go in for a sandwich or whatever it may be. Make it easier for folks to do that. So.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your presentation, your updates on here.
Good.
I just have a couple of questions real quick. So for the, the the REAP plan, did you get good, did you get participation from all of the communities in the county on that or?
Not all of them, no.
But me?
We did get participation from Nevada on it. And in fact, they're the only ones that got comments back to us on that.
Okay.
This was the first year that we reached out to cities, quite frankly. It's always been something that's been done by, as I mentioned, the kind of the, the partner agencies. So Isaac Walton League and, and other resource NGOs. And so Big Blue Stamm and Pheasants Forever and those kinds of groups have, have always been the, the ones that developed that. So this year, we did take the effort to reach out to the cities and, and like I said, heard back from Nevada. So we're pleased that, you know, that we did get some communication back.
Yeah, well, you start somewhere, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So is that on your webpage?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
The updated one, not yet.
Is, has it been approved or does it have to go through conservation? I'm just thinking, we're, we're having a meeting of all of the mayors, incoming mayors and existing mayors. And so if that's something that we can share with them.
Yeah.
You know, I'm happy to do that. Just want to make sure we're giving them the most updated one.
Sure.
And if it makes sense to share it with them.
So I think there's one more review process, one more review meeting for the REAP committee. Once I, I need to put the edits in that we just finished last week.
Okay.
And so then the committee will get together and, and consider that. And, and then it's good to, then it's final.
Okay.
So, yeah. And then, yeah, you know, and we're always, we, the cities, cities have a opportunity for REAP grants, as you know. It's a different opportunity or a different process pool than counties. And there are several pools within the REAP program funding pools. The city applications have to be reviewed by the county committee. And then are essentially, the county committee signs off on those applications. Well, so we struggle, quite frankly, to get the kind of engagement that we, that we would like to with cities. Because I think, you know, when we do have that two-way engagement or that dialogue, it makes for a stronger application.
Right, right.
And so, yeah, any way that we can find to get it, you know, get some, some more dialogue or some more notice of, of the funding opportunities out to the cities, which is great.
Okay. Well, we have a lot of new incoming city leadership. And so I think any, any help we can give them as they're taking in everything.
Sure.
It's, it's a good idea. Our meeting is next week or two weeks from now. So it may not line up exactly, but
Sure.
we can talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
My other question is, why, why is the DOT doing the bidding for the phase three? Why is, why is it, why is DOT, what's DOT's role in that?
They, DOT always manages projects that come through with state funding.
Okay.
So in the past, well, all of our, all of our trail projects, they've all been DOT let.
Okay.
With the exception of if, if there's only local funding in it. So we did one through the city of Slade. So we did one through the city of Slater that we didn't have grant funding for. Quarter of a mile, not even, very short project that we, that we did. We let that locally.
Okay.
But DOT always lets, if we, if we get state recreational trails grant funding, TAP funding, DOT lets those.
Okay.
They manage that funding.
They're going to be doing of the letting for four through six also?
No, we'll do that one.
We're doing that.
We'll do that one. That's ARPA, that's Destination Iowa. Destination Iowa funding does not have to go through DOT. So that's coming directly to us.
Even though Destination Iowa funding is state funding?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So that'll be local. So I know it's confusing.
I, I just wasn't, I just wasn't sure what the, how the DOT fit into that. So, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Next, we have a quarterly report from Facilities Management. Morning, Jovi.
Good morning, board. Okay, y'all should have received my kind of generic report. I'll kind of pick out a few highlights and we'll, we'll talk a little about that. We always try to include the year previous's quarter worth of our work order numbers. They're pretty typical. Few more this quarter than last, but they always vary. There's just a couple on there that kind of stand out more than others. So there's a little explanation, I figured I'd include with that. If you look at group home this quarter versus last quarter, we're a little over double what the work orders that we've, we've received and closed. The biggest reason for that is, two of the group homes that are leased by OptiMay. We'd always kind of struggled with their staff getting work orders in in time. So we worked with the tenants to kind of designate one single person that's in charge of handling and submitting work orders instead of just relying them duties on to the staff at each home. So they have one person that oversees the two OptiMay leased homes that the staff can just simply send them an email and then they submit to work orders through our work order system. And as you can see, that has been very successful to keep them on top of submitting the little things that need to be done. So that kind of dictates why we have so many more than normal. And then our equipment and vehicles, that's kind of a cycle effect. We see that as our trucks and vehicles either get more hours or more miles on them, then they require a few more other maintenance items. And this is one of those kind of perfect storm quarters where a lot of things come due at the same time. So that's why we had a lot more. Not that we had, kind of appears like we had a lot of breakdowns, but that's not really the case. It's more of preventative maintenance items. It's just a lot of vehicles had like, you know, fifty thousand mile services due, which have a few more things than, so. Figured it was worth talking about. Kind of go down through each building. Yeah, we're busy. We, we got a lot of irons in the fire right now, but we kind of like it that way. Admin building, talk a little bit about the, the waxing project we got going on. We have recently switched to a different type of wax that we've been using. We've for a lot of years, we used an acrylic based wax. It's really good. It holds up well. Now there's, we're starting to see more of urethane based waxes. And we've done that on the main floor here and we've started in the basement. The big thing with that is, is it doesn't have the sheen that the acrylic wax does, but it has a fraction of the maintenance and upkeep once you've gone through the process. Now it is kind of a lengthy process to begin with, because we have to strip the floor down to its bare original state before we can apply it. But like, with the acrylic, you, it starts out with about four coats of wax to get it to shine like this hallway out here. And then you probably have to re-wax that three to five times a year, depending on the traffic level of that area. And then you have to buff it periodically. Well, the urethane wax doesn't have a, you don't ever have to buff it. It's significantly harder. And you only have to recode it every three to five years, depending on the traffic area, and then you can recode it up to seven times. So if you kind of do the short math on that, by the time the wax needs stripped off of it, that's the life of the floor. So in the long run, it's, and it's about a third the cost upfront, but over the duration of the life of a floor, it will more than pay for itself.
Any idea how much time that's going to save you?
Yeah, it's going to save us a lot of time. Once we get through, it's going to take us probably two, three years to get through all the buildings, but in the long run, it's going to save us a significant amount of time. So.
What will you put that time to then?
Oh, we got a lot of other stuff.
You won't be lost for work to do.
No.
Yeah.
No, it's, if anything, that's probably one of the, and I know Linda, this is one of your pet peeves, is when I mention this word deferred maintenance. Floors is one of the things that we always defer, because it's always an undertaking to take on those waxing projects and it's an easy one to push off to the side. So we won't have that happen moving forward.
Well, you do a good job. When I tell people when this building was opened, they just, they're amazed. They think it's brand new. Fairly new, no, it's, it's been here sixty-seven or eight?
Sixty-six, I think it was.
Sixty-six, okay. Yeah. So that's, so that's just incredible. You're doing a great job.
Yeah. And like these trousel floors out here are original to when it was built. So we have some vinyl flooring that is, you know, happened around two thousand four, two thousand five. So when we remodeled it. But yeah, it's the team, they all take pride in what they do. And that, that, yes, that's, that's why they look as good as they do. We got a lot of people that care. So. Okay, we got kind of a big project starting. We got the permanent front counter barriers is underway. It's moving along well. Animal control is just about done. They're doing some painting and then they'll be installing some glass, but walls are up, sheet rocks up, and they've started here in IT and just started this morning a little bit in environmental health. So.
Awesome.
Yeah, it was nice to see a project that's actually ahead of schedule. So.
Yeah.
It's going along well. I'm sure we'll run into stuff that we didn't unforeseen, but so far, so good. So. And then a lot of LED updates going on in all of our buildings. Got most of the supplies. We're still kind of struggling to get some. They can be slow, but then keyless entry and camera projects for security. And that's, we'll be doing that for the next couple, three years. Got generator project is the contract is now signed and ready to go. Probably won't see much action on it until spring. Some of that equipment's got a yearly time on it. So, but it'll be another nice one to have done for this building. So.
Yeah.
And Human Services Center, HVAC replacement project. It's, it's month or so behind the schedule. We ran into some, we got the main equipment. Got it installed, but then some of the minor fittings, some insulation's been delayed, but all the equipment's up and installed. They're looking to start to start up on it this week. So that included rooftop unit and then five heat pumps. So. Another good one to be moving along with. It was tentatively, it was originally scheduled to be done the first part of November. Here we are in first part of December.
About its supply chain issues.
Yeah, a lot of it was. And then scheduling issues because of the supply chain issues. So then getting the contractor to, it can, you know.
Right.
Kind of a domino effect. So. Then the HVAC project at the Justice Center, it is, I don't want to say complete, because there is just a few little building automation controls that need to finish up. But I mean, all the equipment's in, all of it is running. Most of the, the automation stuff is there's like some stair tower heaters that they're operational. They're just not on the automation system yet. And then just tying in some of our little loose ends things is the best way to do it. But yeah, everything is running and it's been running well. So. And then that's another building that we're, we got. Updating the LED lighting in it. That's one we're waiting on supplies. There's a hundred and seventy-one can lights, real similar to what's in this room that we're waiting to be delivered. So. And then County Attorney remodel contract signed for it. We started the design phase of it. Got it. Had a couple of meetings already and got another one scheduled for next week to kind of go over some different ideas. So it's going well. Another good one to have moving along. And yeah, doing some flooring replacements. That's just, we've been working on that for about the last six years. A lot of flooring in there. So main public restroom, second floor is done. They started, they'll start on the first floor restrooms tomorrow. And that was all, all that flooring was original that we've been replacing. So most of it lasted about twenty years, which is very good, which kind of goes back to the care that the team puts towards all that. So get good life. Longevity out of that flooring. That was the word I was looking for. Yeah. And then we still, another big project is the upgrading the jail plumbing. It's, we've been, I think this is our fifth year. We've been working on it and it's converting it from a lot of it was vacuum operated mechanical components and then moving to a more modern electronic equipment. In that so far, we're probably a little over fifty percent with installed. And then we have the other fifty percent of the material is we have, we're just working on finishing up. And I think you know, we plan to budget for the final pieces to finish up that project, but it is already reduced our after hours call-ins by about thirty percent.
Nice.
And it only get, you know, nuts with fifty percent of the facility converted. So it's been a long project, but it has been worth the investment. So. And then, yeah. At Farland Park, we're kind of doing some automatic flush valve updates as they go ban. Just a lot of that's got to do with not necessarily that the ones that were there were were inadequate. It was more of, they weren't, replacement parts weren't readily available. So we just kind of slowly, as the original ones failed, we just replace them with more more available components. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Yeah, I tried to go fast. You got any questions? I'd gladly answer them.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Very detailed report. Appreciate it.
You bet.
No other reports, any upcoming agenda items?
No.
No.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. And seeing no one step forward to raise their hand, we'll close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Headens?
Sure. I have a one o'clock meeting this afternoon. Then I have a Board of Health meeting. And then I have an ARC meeting as well. Tomorrow I have an interview in the morning and then a ISAC budgeting webinar that I'm going to partake in. I try to jump on the wellness session and then I see that Jody's retirement up in Roland is tomorrow night as well. Hope to make that. I'm not quite sure. Thursday, Economic Development Framework Work Session. And then also a that afternoon, another county budgeting webinar from ISAC. I have a private appointment then afterwards. Friday, I have a workforce early morning meeting. I was also to go to Colo Library. But I know we have a staff meeting as well, so I'm going to try to figure out how to do that. Monday, an interview. I also have Aging Resources meeting and then a oh gosh, I gotta look at Monday. There's too much stuff going on. I think you sent something Supervisor Basil about fiscal year twenty twenty-three building resilient infrastructure from Mako.
Yeah, there's a.
I put that on my calendar too, if I'm available to do that. And then I have a meeting over names later in the afternoon. So busy.
Yeah. It's that time of year.
It is.
Have several of those on my calendar as well. Most, most of them. In addition, tomorrow I have a call with some representatives from Watershed Management Authorities, talking about possible Legislative Day in January. Then the other things in Thursday and Friday and Monday. Would remind everybody that in the afternoon, there's a reception at, I believe it's three o'clock. Is that right, Mike? For Ted Tedesco, who's leaving the Conservation Board after fifteen, fifteen years. So that's just ahead of the Conservation Board meeting, which will be at five thirty. So I think there's a public, there's a presentation at four o'clock, but it's three to five. Something like that. So, so invite everybody to stop by and give their best wishes to Ted and thank, congratulations on all his work he's done with conservation.
And that reminds me is today with the Board of Health will be Dr. Kluge's last board meeting after serving, I believe it's forty-nine years.
Oh my gosh.
On the Board of Health.
What time is that meeting?
At two o'clock.
I won't be here. Can't be here. That's what's going on, but that's amazing.
We've got very committed individuals.
We do. And you know, I took.
Who are on a number of our boards and commissions.
I tell people a lot that a lot of, you know, that a good share of the work that the county does is actually done by volunteers.
Yep.
You serve on our boards and commissions as well as doing other things for us. So it's good that we recognize them.
I have a lot of those same meetings this afternoon. I'm sorry, looking at the wrong day. Tomorrow morning are the wellness screens that are scheduled for Nevada. So anyone who signed up for the wellness screens in Nevada, those are tomorrow morning. And then I have an interview tomorrow morning also. And we'll be attending the ISAC webinar. I'm going to try to make it to Jody's retirement party also. Let's see, I feel like there were a couple of things that are extra on my Thursday evening. I have a boost board meeting and then a CFR board meeting in the evening. I've got the office staff meeting on my calendar. And then Monday, I'm also going to, I'm hoping to attend the, the building resilient infrastructure communities, but I have a personal appointment kind of right in the middle there. So and another interview Monday mornings and Story County opioid task force meeting Monday morning. And then I've got Ted Tedesco's reception on my calendar also. So very busy week. Anything else?
I move, we adjourn second.
Moved in seconded headends.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.